I'm going to call to order this Lacey City Council meeting on June 14, 2018. Can everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Amen.
We have an agenda that's been distributed. Is there any additions? Can I get a motion?
Move to approve the agenda as published.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. We have an agenda. And first up on our agenda is Public Recognitions and Presentations, the recognition of Helen Spalding for the Library Board Service. And Helen is here today, and I'm going to actually come up to the mic here. So, on behalf of the Lacey City Council, it's really my honor to give you this distinguished public service award presented to you for your time on the Library Board from 2012 to 2018. And I just really want to give a extra special thanks to Helen. She actually resigned her position a little bit early this time around because we had, this last time, we had really great applicants to the Library Board. And Helen had mentioned if we have these really great applicants and we have a really difficult time deciding to, you know, give her a call and she'd be willing to step down. And that's what we did, and that's what you did. And we have some really great people, and sometimes you just don't know when you go on the Library Board, you know, when you go through applications, sometimes you have a, you know, not necessarily a strong group, and other times you have a really strong group. And this time around, we had just a great people, and so I really want to thank you for, of course, all your years of service on the Library Board. You've really undertook some big changes, actually, during your time on the Library Board. So, thank you so much, and I really appreciate everything you've done.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate that.
Want to say a few words?
May I?
Yes.
I do want to take the chance to say what a pleasure it's been working with the city. I just am so impressed with what a wonderful example this government is of elected officials working with professional management to do the best they can for the public good. They're kind, civil, working with them is, you know, there's dialogue, mutual respect. If new information and facts come up, it's okay to change an opinion and move in a different way. It's just so refreshing to find that. There's integrity, transparency, accountability with this group, and so it couldn't be more wonderful to work on a board in support of that. Clearly, they value the place of the library and the community. The library is central to any community and provides not just connection to information and resources people may need, but we have professional staff under Holly who, they actually can help people save a lot of time because they can target exactly what people need for them to most efficiently and effectively do their work, especially finding what's factual rather than what they might think is available for them to use. There's entertainment. People can learn new skills. There are programs. You can buy books from the Friends of the Library for a dollar apiece. And the library, like the city, treats all the library users with respect and equity. So it is a safe place that people feel they can come to. And the Lacey Timberland Library is the envy of the 26 other branches within Timberland because this city maintains such a beautiful facility, provides security for it, and thanks to Scott Spence, we have a new kiosk in Hawks Prairie so that people can pick up and return library materials there. So it's a real convenience. Anyway, I really thank you for this opportunity, for having been able to serve and to work with such wonderful people. And I just hope that the Library Board continues to be as strong as it has been and contribute to what the city has to offer.
Thank you. Can you come by and shake your hand?
Thank you.
Sure, please, please. And then you'll be, oh, yeah, please.
Helen, before you sit down, she is walking, I just want to take a moment to say what a true pleasure it has been to work with Helen with her energy, her excitement, her passion, her professionalism over the time that I've been the manager of the Lacey Timberland Library. She has truly made this board into the advocate and the wonderful entity that it can be, this true liaison between the city and the Library District. And I just really appreciate all of that fire and energy and passion that you brought to make that board and that you are leaving it in that place where the energy and the passion and the excitement and hard work is standard to what they do, thanks to the example that you set. So I just want to say thank you. Me personally, thanks to you, Helen, for all of your hard work and dedication during the time that I've been here. I really appreciate it.
Well, thank you, Holly.
So next, under Public Recognitions and Presentations is the Thurston County Relay for Life. Stephanie?
Hi, everyone. My name is Stephanie Sams. I am on the executive leadership team for the Thurston County Relay for Life. I want to thank you all for letting us come here tonight and for Lacey in general for hosting the Thurston County Relay for Life for many years, and to the North Thurston Public School District for letting us use their fields. Relay for Life is a community-based fundraising event through the American Cancer Society. Relay is the most successful event that the American Cancer Society hosts. The mission is to raise funds to improve cancer survival, decrease the incidence of cancer, and improve the quality of life for cancer patients and their caretakers. I'm just curious, how many here are familiar with Relay for Life and/or have participated in Relay for Life? Yes, that's actually a lot. I'm preaching to the choir here, I guess, so bear with me. A little history on Relay for Life. The really exciting thing is that it is a Pacific Northwest homegrown event. The first event took place in Tacoma in 1985 when Dr. Gordy Klatt, who is a colorectal surgeon, wanted to do more for his cancer patients and to raise funds for American Cancer Society. He alone decided that he was going to walk or run for 24 hours at the University of Puget Sound in Tacoma. And in that 24-hour period, family and friends donated $25 to walk or run with him, and in that 24-hour period, he raised $27,000 on his own. It was huge. It got a lot of momentum. He wanted to do more, and so he reached out to the community, and the following year there were 19 teams that were signed up to do the same thing that he had done the year before. Fast forward 33 years to today, there are over 5,000 Relay for Life events annually across the globe, whether in Denmark, Guatemala, Malaysia, Portugal, and in areas of the African continent. Speaking of Africa, previously, an individual may have had to have walked for four days just to get a cancer, to get to a location to get a cancer diagnosis, and they would have had to wait six to eight months for treatment. With American Cancer Society partnering with global organizations, they get much faster treatment and diagnosi. American Cancer Society is the number one profit, sorry, the number one nonprofit organization that supports cancer research. We have funded over, we have funded 47 Nobel laureates. This has led to a 23% decrease in cancer death rates since 1991. That's 1.7 million fewer cancer deaths. That's exciting, yes, thank you. So where does the money go? Here's an overview of the breakdown. So, over the years, we've given $406 million in cancer research grants. We've provided 1.2 million calls and chats with cancer patients and caregivers to provide them information, and we've provided 456,000 nights at Hope Lodge. Hope Lodge is a facility that allows cancer patients and their families to stay for free in a hotel where they, if your family has to travel for cancer treatment. So locally, in Thurston County, we also see benefits to this. There is a service program called Road to Recovery, and it's kind of like Uber, eh, kind of like Uber for cancer patients, but free, which, so that's even better. If a cancer patient needs a ride to their appointment, to a medical appointment, and their caregiver or family or friend cannot take them, they can call Road to Recovery, and they can get a ride for free. In Thurston County, we have nine drivers, and last year we provided 80 rides. So, not a lot. You can help us increase that if you know someone who has the time and the resources to be a driver. Encourage them to do so. So, why should you all get involved? Cancer does not discriminate. So locally, since American Cancer Society is, well, Relay for Life in particular is a community-based event, for Thurston County, this is really exciting. We have 448 participants currently for this year's Relay for Life. That's 67 teams, and we've already raised $259,000 for this year's Relay for Life event. So how can you help us? You can participate, you can donate. If you know businesses that are interested in getting involved, you can reach out to us, and we can get them involved in that. So I'm going to talk to you a little bit about our event, the Thurston County Relay for Life. It is next weekend, so it's next Friday at 6:00 PM to Saturday, 6:00 PM. We're going to be at Kamatchan Middle School, which is just down the street, and it's a really exciting event. So we have a lot of different activities going on throughout the night. Three main ones is kickoff at 6:00 PM, and the kickoff also is followed by a survivor lap, which is a lap that we do in honor and remembrance of our survivors, our cancer survivors, and then they are treated to a free dinner after that. At 10:00 PM, we remember those who have battled the disease with our luminary ceremony. Those familiar with the event know that you can take a little baggie, it's a white baggie, a little paper bag, and you can write on it, you can write your name of your loved one who has battled cancer. And then at 10 o'clock, they're lined up around the track, and we put a candle in them, and it's absolutely moving. It's gorgeous, and so we encourage people to come to that. If they can come to anything, come to the survivor lap or come to the 10 o'clock luminary event. And then 5:30 on Saturday is our Fight Back lap, and that's a commitment that we make to ourselves to continue to fight cancer over the rest of the year, and that's also our closing ceremony at 5:30 on Saturday. We also have multiple events throughout the 24 hours, so if you want to come, and you can only be there for a short time, that's totally fine. We have vendors there who are selling cupcakes or what have you, and there's also a lot of activities that we do throughout the day to make it a lot of fun. So, we really appreciate Lacey's investment in our event, and so if there's anything we can do to help encourage that, let us know. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie. Our next agenda item is public comments, not on the agenda, and I do have one person who's signed up, Holly.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Holly Paxton. I'm the manager of the Lacey Timberland Library next door, and I just would like to not use my full three minutes, but just share a little bit of information with you and extend an invitation to all of you here and to our community as a whole. I think most of you know who Timberland Regional Library is, as we are, that is our district-wide organization that operates in five counties and provides state-of-the-art, up-to-date full collection services in all 27 communities in our five counties, Thurston, Mason, Lewis, Gray's Harbor, and Pacific Counties. But we weren't always here. In the late 1960s, the Washington State Library Commission initiated a demonstration project to improve library services in our five counties. It was in response to requests from the county's residents, many of whom lived very, very far away from a library. Libraries aren't cheap to run, surprisingly enough. All those books and computers and staff time take a little bit of money, and for very small communities, it can be just completely out of the range of feasibility for a community budget to facilitate something like that. And so, this demonstration project happened in the 60s, and through this cooperative effort, library services were consolidated to create a more efficient and economical regional operation, to increase the size of library collections, and to provide service for the first time in several library communities. And in November of 1968, which coincidentally enough is exactly 50 years ago this year, citizens voted to unite the five counties into one library district called the Timberland Regional Library. Our services started in 21 libraries with Becky Morrison as the first executive director, and since 1968, TRL has provided information, reading, and lifelong learning services at 27 libraries and five library service partner locations by offering nearly 1.2 million items to more than 475,000 people. We are funded mainly by local property taxes with additional income from timber sales, which is why we're called Timberland. In celebration of this, Timberland Regional Library's 50th birthday, I would like to cordially invite all of you to join us at the library next door here in Lacey. We will be having events at all 27 of our library locations on June 30th, but since we're here in Lacey, you know, you can come here, we're closest. At June 30th, at 1:00 PM, we will be featuring a musical performance by the local Celtic trio Pinipet, enjoying some absolutely delicious cupcakes from Miss Moffett's Mystical Cupcakes, and celebrating our 50th anniversary and our 50th birthday with Timberland Regional Library. We're very proud to have been able to provide library service for the past 50 years, and we'd like to invite you to come celebrate with us and eat a cupcake in honor of 50 more. And that's what I have for you all today.
Thank you.
Thanks, Holly.
Is there anyone else wishing to address the council on any items not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll go on to our next item, actually, under the mayor's report. I just want to take a shout for our planning commissioner, David Staus here. Thank you for being here. And then also, today is Flag Day, so happy Flag Day to everyone. City manager.
I'm Mayor and City Council. We have three items before you. The first one is the Long Lake Beach Rules Update, and Director of Parks, Jennifer Burridge, will provide that report.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Ryder, members of the council. Tonight, you have before you a final approval of the Long Lake Park Beach Rules. Prior review included park board review and approval of the rules at their May 9th meeting of this year. Also, council had received the beach rules in your packet for last week's work session. Background regarding this, due to new safety best practices and issues related to controlling patron behaviors at Long Lake Park and beach area, changes have been made to the dock and swim area. As a result, some rule changes are necessary before the start of the summer season, which is June 23rd. The park board unanimously approved the amended Long Lake Park Beach Rules, like I said, at the May 9th meeting. The rules have been filed with the city clerk per LMC, and these updated rules will make it easier to support the swim area changes that were made. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Can I get a motion?
I move that we approved the Long Lake Park Beach Rules.
Second. It's been moved in second to approve these updated Long Lake Park Rules and Regulations discussion. I just have a quick question. I know that we are no longer allowing flotation devices within the area. Can you give us some background on why we decided not to?
Yeah, so the flotation devices have been recommended as a best practice not to allow those. So it's, the first reason is moving forward with that recommendation, and then the second reason is that the area that the flotation devices have been allowed in in the past is the area where there's actually no swimming. Even though it is a floaty, it's considered a part of the swim function and not a small watercraft. So the small watercraft area will be for paddle boards and kayaks only.
Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, it's been moved in second to adopt these new park rules and regulations. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
So the next item is the 2018 Street Overlay Program Bid Award, and Director of Public Works, Scott Egger, will provide that information.
Good evening, mayor and council. Staff recommends approval of 2018 Overlay Program, PW 2018-08 to Granite Construction. Their low bid was $2,21,900. The engineer's estimate was $1.6 million. As you can see, there's a bit of a difference there, and I'll explain that towards the end. There were two bidders, there's 60 working days allowed, and we believe construction will start around mid-July. I just want to point out that there are really two schedules or two parts to this project. It isn't entirely an overlay project. So, in our world, we use the term schedule. So Schedule A is overlay, which is $1.368 million, and Schedule B is stormwater work for $635,000. There's the map, you can see, and I'll, I have some zoom-ins, but you can see, here's the couplet here. So all these projects are generally south of the couplet and a little bit east or west of College Street. So zooming in a little bit to the northern part, you can see there's a stretch on Golf Club, 14th, 17th, 18th, 19th, and over on 21st. That's all overlay. This area is a combination of overlay and stormwater work, so you can see this is located between College Street and Ruddle and north of Mullen. The microburst we had in last May brought to our attention some flooding issues that have been reoccurring, that really have been up more so at the north part of this, up around 33rd Court. But stormwater along Steigs Drive is part of the issue. So, we're doing both an overlay project in there, but we're also installing probably 2/3 to 3/4 of a mile of pipeline and catch basins in order to alleviate this stormwater issue. And so the stormwater utility will be paying for that portion of the work, not the overlay program. And due to the increase in bid, we will, you know, come to you with a budget amendment for the stormwater portion of the work. So this explains the majority of the cost differential. That's a history, a partial history of what we've paid for asphalt over the years. This bid was $127 per ton. The highest we've paid in the past has been $96 a ton, which was when we paved this shop parking lot, which was, you know, smaller in scale, so you'd expect a little bit higher unit prices. You see Hogum Bay Road was $92 a ton, and you can run down to the bottom line there, where in 2012, we paid $67 a ton. Over the years, you do get these drastic leaps for whatever the reason happens to be, and typically, we incorporate into the specifications a clause that will adjust if there are drastic changes in the cost of asphalt during a project. But with that said, we don't think the time of year, we have come before you before and recommended that we pull back projects and don't build, and then rebid at a different time of year. We're not recommending that here because we don't know that the asphalt prices will go down, and we would really like to take care of that stormwater work before we go into the next wet season. So with that, staff recommends moving ahead and approval. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them for you.
I'd move to award Lacey contract number PW 20018-08 to Low Bitter Granite Construction Company from Olympia, Washington, an amount of $2,21,900 and associated budget amendment to the Stormwater Fund.
Second.
It's been moved in second to award this contract to the Low Bitter Granite Construction discussion.
Yeah, a quick question. Isn't it unusual for us to only have two bidders on a project like this? It seemed like a...
Well, it is unusual, but it's a, I mean, as you know, the economy's been incredibly busy, so, you know, Lakeside and Granite are a couple of larger locals, and, you know, so they, you know, they, you know, they'll bid on most of the asphalt work that comes up. Lakeside has done more work for us, but Granite has done a couple of projects in the past. They've done an earlier overlay project, and they did a paper on College Street probably about 12 years ago. But yes, it is unusual to only have two.
Thank you.
Just out of curiosity, is it, do you need to have more than one bidder necessarily?
No, it's just lowest responsible bid.
Good thing they didn't take, nobody took marble for granite.
Right.
So, geez.
About quartz.
And so, were, did, basically, were they both using that number of 127, or is that the number that we're seeing asphalt at right now?
Lakeside was slightly lower, but not much. I mean, it was, you know, it was above $120 a ton also.
Wow, okay. Is there any other discussion? It's been moved in second to award this Lacey contract to the Low Bitter Granite Construction Company from Olympia. All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries.
Thank you.
The other item before you is the Annual Transportation Benefit District Report, and Scott Egger will provide that information.
Per the RCWs, we are required to bring to the council an annual transportation benefit district report, and with your approval, you know, then we're required to publish that. We really don't have much to report on this year because, you know, all we've done is the design of the project that will be built this year, but it's a requirement. So I will run through some slides. You have the annual report in your packet. But, you know, as you know, the Transportation Benefit District was formed on January 28, 2016, and forming the district does not provide a funding mechanism. So then the council proposed, you know, weighed the pros and cons of the various revenue packages that were allowed, and the council looked at all of them and proposed a 0.2 sales tax increase to fund street and sidewalk rehabilitation. So then we did considerable outreach. The date was set for Valentine's Day, 2017, and the voters came out, and they supported the TBD, the 0.2% sales tax district, and we had over 62% approval. You can see there kind of the support by voter district. The red is an area that had less than 50%, the green had greater than 50%, the darker the green, the greater the percentage. So, other than mainly the commercial industrial area there around I-5, most of the residents supported us. Thurston County certified the election on February 24th, and, you know, then we started collecting sales tax revenue July 1st. And as of December 31st, our fund balance was, as you can see there, about $1.27 million. And I've just gone over the location of our 2018 overlay projects. We will continue... 2018 overlay projects. We will continue outreach with our citizens, you know, with this type of sign along the projects where we are using TBD funds for our overlay, just to let people know that their, their funds are at work, and we'll keep up the public awareness. So with that, if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them for you.
Are there any questions?
Move to approve the 2017 annual report for the Transportation Benefit District.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion?
I'm really pleased you are signing that, so that people know that it is definitely going towards what they're voting for. I think that's a good PR way to, to do that. People sometimes just assume that, well, they can't find what their people are doing because they may not live on that street or whatever, but...
Yeah. We agree. It's a phenomenal idea that was brought to, to us by our city manager, so.
So, thank you.
It's good to see the first project getting underway with that money.
It's all teamwork, right?
Thanks. Mr. City Manager?
So just one final item. I'm proud to share with you, the Association of the United States Army honored the city of Lacey with their exceptional contributions award. This is all the work...
Do we have to vote?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, did we not?
We did not.
Oh.
It's second.
Oh, thank you. It's been moved in second to accept the annual transportation benefit district report. All in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Now, City Manager.
I just took away my atta boy. As I was saying, the city of Lacey was honored with an exceptional contribution award from the Association of the United States Army. This was last night, and this is really in recognition of the relationship we have with First One Two Striker Brigade, all the work you've done with the military, and understanding that we have a large military community within the city of Lacey, not to mention the work we've done with the Lacey Veteran Services Hub. So just wanted to share this with council. That was a great honor, and I'll pass this down.
Thank you. So next up is our Standing General Committee's reports, and first up is our Land Use Committee.
The Land Use Committee met on May 22nd, and there were two main agenda items. The first was an update on our hazard mitigation plan from Sarah Schelling. This plan was first adopted in 2003 as a member of, it put us as a member of a multi-jurisdictional hazard, hazard plan, and it was led by our Thurston Regional Planning Council. And federal law requires these mitigation plans to be reviewed, updated, and approved by the Federal Emergency Management Agency every five years. The plan essentially contains a regional risk assessment of local hazards. It identifies regional goals and policies to form the basis of the mitigation strategy, and then it identifies categories to focus on these local strategies. So it's a pretty thorough plan. We also talked about the scope of the Land Use Committee, and City Manager Spence was there to talk with us a little bit about the possibility of including a component of environmental reporting under the Land Use Committee. This committee has had, I guess, a more limited role. It kind of, it was an outgrowth of another committee. So we're looking at how to make this committee work a little bit more meaningful. So this should be becoming before the full council for an affirmative vote on changing directions. And I think you're looking at all the committees, Scott?
We will. So I think there's maybe a question before council now. So the, the Land Use Committee did agree as, you know, three members of the full council, that they would take on the additional duties of environment. That would actually go through their committee. If the rest of council is in agreement with that, it would be nice to have an affirmative vote on that, and then they could actually take that action up immediately. But we also talked about, we just need to do some house cleaning items and get that into your council policies and procedures to, you know, spell that out.
Are we looking for a motion to that effect tonight?
Yes, for the expanded duties for land.
So I would move to expand the workload of the Land Use Committee to include environmental issues.
I second.
It's been moved in second to have the Land Use Committee be the place where we look at more of our environmental issues as a Standing General Committee. Let's have some discussion, council member.
So could you please expound, unpack environmental? That's a big thing, and I haven't been involved in the discussion.
Unpack it?
What, what do you mean environmental? What have your discussions been about? I'm just curious.
They haven't. It's just we're kind of looking for a home for environmental issues that need to come before city committees.
City-related environmental issues, air, water, land?
Right.
Well, for instance, like Mazama Park, it'd go for issues would possibly come before us. That does not mean the rest of the committees might not see it also, kind of thing, but, but the first initiation of what some of those environmental issues could be, for instance, spraying and stuff, I could see that being some of the...
So nothing's really come onto the committee yet. You're just kind of thinking of expanding it because the, the current workload is thin, or?
Well, it's thin, and I think somebody needs a little bit more meaningful work to do.
More meaning, more purpose.
It's more to do, I think. Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, I was just gonna add that, for instance, when we talked about the Climate Action Plan, at one point, it bounced from general government to also community relations. So there was an essay home, which is an important topic that council has actually devoted some time on. We've talked about solar projects or electric vehicle stations. Plus, we have a pretty good environmental stewardship record, and it somewhat emphasizes through this, in a way, this committee of all the good work we're doing. And so there's an opportunity to basically showcase that in a committee and also get that into the record.
We could call the committee Earth, Wind, and Fire.
That would work for me, too.
So, it's been, it's been moved in second to have the Land Use Committee also take up our quote-unquote "environmental" issues. All those in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I would thank yourself, Cynthia, and Lenny for taking on the extra workload, though.
It's, who else is on? Who's on?
Oh, that's general government.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
There are, you know, I actually, to be serious here for a second, I think this is sort of long overdue. Lacey's been doing great work on this front for a long, long time, and we very rarely report out on all the good things that we have done, or really talk about some of the leadership, you know, the ways we've been leaders when it comes to the environment. And so I applaud Land Use for sort of taking this up. We, we'll see some stuff coming from this committee here pretty shortly, as we discuss about our climate action plan with the Regional Climate Action Plan. Lacey's, as has been pointed out, Lacey's actually ahead of the game of the other jurisdictions on this issue. So it'll be interesting to see that play out. We're in the process of that, and so I'm sure Land Use will get an update on where they're at and what next steps on that front will be as well. And of course, one of the things that I will be talking about in just a little bit is that we're gonna be looking at putting some electric charging stations here and other places in conjunction with the North Thurston Public Schools, and so I'm sure you can get some updates on that as well. So there's a lot of information there, and I just appreciate you guys taking up the work.
All right. And thank you, City Manager Spence, for clarifying.
So next up is the General Government.
So the General Government and Public Safety Committee met May 22nd. I think there were three items. The, the first up was the homeowners association grant applications. And so the Lacey City Council approved $25,000 in 2018, our budget of 2018, to be distributed to homeowner associations through the Lacey Neighborhood Grant Program. And this year, the city received 34 grant applications from 19 neighborhoods, which amounted to a 200 increase in applications from last year. 23 grants totaling $25,038.3. We don't want to forget the 3 cents, will be distributed to 18 neighborhoods, and projects that were in compliance with city code were selected. And so every neighborhood received funding for at least one grant project. However, not, every grant was funded 100%. We tried to distribute it as best we could, oh, through, for, to the HOAs. The next up on our agenda was policy related to inter-local agreements, and the city manager's office drafted a policy for consideration regarding the approval process for inter-local agreements. And this is in relation to trying to streamline and standardize the process. The proposed policy will allow inter-local agreements classified as routine to be added directly to the city council's consent agenda, while inter-local agreements classified as significant should be directed through the respective council committees before being forwarded to the full council for a vote. And so just for the audience's knowledge, remember that if it's on a consent agenda, it can always be pulled off. But if it's just something that, it's a renewal of something we've been doing for 20 years, but we have to go through it again, that, it seems kind of silly to waste the committee's time when we could just go ahead and renew it on the consent agenda. Routine is described as any local agreement that requires a city commitment of equal to or less than $25,000, or any agreement previously established that is set to renew or amendment that does not include any significant language changes or increase in level of city support. And then there's another definition of substantial or significantly modified, which is any inter-local agreement that requires a city commitment of more than $25,000, or any agreement previously established that is set for renewal or amendment that does include significant language changes or increase the level of city support. So, and we agreed with the proposal, and I believe that will be under the council, under city manager's report. So, and then it'll be drafted into the council's policies and procedures manual. So the next item is the CDBG Urban County Renewal Agreement. And the city manager informed the committee that the CDBG stands for Community Development Block Grant Program. So the CDBG Urban County Agreement with Thurston County and the City of Tumwater is up for renewal. And it was noted that Lacey will most likely reach $50,000 in population within the next three years, and I believe we're already there, 50,170, I think. But it is not fully approved yet without...
Two more weeks.
Two more weeks. Okay, so, once a city reaches $50,000 in population, it can be received funds directly from the Department of Housing and Urban Development as an entitlement community. And I believe Olympia does that already. The city needs to notify Thurston County by June 12th, 2018, if it intends to sign the county renewal agreement. In following discussion, the committee agreed to bring discussion to the full council during the June 7th work session with a recommendation to approve.
Which we did.
And I think that's on the agenda.
Nope, we already did that.
We already did, yeah.
We just did it. Why didn't I?
Last week.
Oh, yes, that's right. We did last week. Okay, so I didn't need to report that. And other than, I was contacted by a citizen about the flag, a pride flag at City Hall, which I referred on to the city manager, and we discussed it during the work session. And that's my, my report.
Okay, thank you. So next up is Boards, Commission, and Committee Reports, and I'm up first. The Transportation Policy Board met yesterday, bright and early, on June 13th, 7:00 AM, and this is the, the one big meeting that we have every, well, most years to grant federal funds for our, that have usually fallen into three categories: Surface Transportation Program, the Transportation Alternatives Program, and the Congestion Mitigation and Air Quality Program, which we have qualified as a region for several years because at one point, we had a major air quality problem in our area because of wood burning, fireplaces and stoves. So we've been receiving CMAC funding for a while. This is always a difficult process to go through for a couple reasons. First of all, we don't know each year, when we do the call projects, what the exact dollar amount this region's gonna receive for federal funding. And so we, we make a guesstimate, and on those three areas, the Surface Transportation money, the Transportation Alternatives, and the CMAC. And so we have everyone submit for projects without really knowing what those numbers are. And sure enough, this time around, a couple of weeks ago, we got the actual numbers, and on the Surface Transportation Program, we're actually, we're gonna receive another $218,000 more. But on the Transportation Alternatives and the CMAC, Transportation Alternatives, we received $119,000 less. And on the CMAC, we received $150,000 less than what we were guesstimating at. And so we did a call for projects for, to all of our partners in Thurston County that have, you know, that qualify for these, all the cities. There's a, for the Transportation Alternatives and the CMAC, it can be outside, some other agencies can qualify for those funds as well. But what we did find out, and of course, we always receive more requests than what you can grant for, usually, usually. But this time around, we found out, oh, jeez, just about a week or so ago, that the federal government was gonna be giving a one-time allocation to this region through Thurston Regional Planning Council and through the, of course, the Transportation Policy Board makes the first recommendation, some federal money called Highway Improvement Funds, Highway Improvement Program Funds, and, which is very similar to Surface Transportation Funds, on how you can use them. And so we received a one-time allocation of about $587,000, which made this process a lot easier when you're, you receive $587,000 more than you thought you were going to. And there's some additional, some additional requirements that go along with having that funding. And so you hope you can award all of those funds to, to one agency instead of trying to split the money up between a couple of agencies. And the city of Lacey graciously said, okay, we'll take that money as part of our College Street corridor work. And so there was a recommendation to, to award it to one agency, and our recommendation for Transportation Policy Board was to award that to Lacey. And so how, how this all played out, it really only came down to a couple of big policy questions. There was, with this additional funding, there was really enough to fund all the Surface Transportation Program requests, all the, all the Transportation Alternative Program requests. Where we're gonna be short is on the CMAC requests. And, and so the big question we had as a policy board came down to looking at all the people, all the jurisdictions who submitted projects. And what I, we realized was that the South County always kind of has a difficult time making sure they qualify for these projects, that they have sort of the project in place to do it. For example, Yelm had a big project that they really wanted to get done, but they, they weren't gonna be able to get it in time, and so they had to withdraw the application. And so what I was looking at was that, jeez, South County in this circumstance wasn't necessarily receiving what would be their allocation of these funds. Now, we don't do it that way. We don't set aside funds for different jurisdictions, but it became apparent that South County was not receiving sort of their allocation. And so we had the, we had a lot of conversations between the vice chair and myself and staff, and we made a recommendation that we actually pull some of these funds aside and give, so these, these funds are for, to allocate in 2020, 2022 cycle. So it's a couple of years off. And so what we said is, let's pull some of this money back and give South County... And so, what we said is, let's pull some of this money back and give South County jurisdiction sort of another year to kind of come up with their project. If they can't come up with their, their project in a year, then what we would do was, the Interstate Transit has, is in the process to try and replace a lot of their, their vans for dial lift, to propane vans. And so, if, if the South County doesn't come up with a project by next year, that we would turn those funds over to Interstate Transit so they can buy, purchase another van. They originally wanted six vans. There wasn't enough, ever enough funding really for all six vans. We have enough funding. We funded, a recommendation to fund for three vans, with this possible fourth other van if South County doesn't come up with a project. So, that was, the majority of the conversation happened around that policy discussion. And I, I think we came to a conclusion, and it'll be a win-win either way, either South County will be able to come up with a project, or Interstate Transit will get another van. So, that was the majority. We always set aside a couple of hours for this meeting, and that took up the majority of our time. We did have another, another quick presentation about I-5 near-term actions. As this council knows, we've been looking at the I-5 corridor, and we're hoping to plan for long-term what we need to upgrade this corridor. In the meantime, there are some smaller things that can be done in the near-term actions. One of that is, you know, possibly hard shoulder riding, and there's, you know, some other things out there that they would like to take a look at, and they're going to take a look at. And so, some of those items were discussed as well. And that is my report. So, next up is Deputy Mayor.
So, the Joint Animal Services Meeting actually was a retreat on June 4th. And what we did was, to begin, it ought, to begin the retreat discussion was, discuss what we had, or what Jazzcom had been doing for the last two years, and put it up on a timeline of what was accomplished. And then, the next item was discussing what needed to be planned for, for the next two to five years. And they were kind of broken out in two items. One is the facility upgrades and expansion. And what we know is that the cat holding area is below standards, right? At this, it wasn't when it was first built, but it certainly is now. And so, that needs to be done something with. And I would argue also, although it wasn't brought out in as much detail, the dog holding pond, uh, facility is probably not up to standard. The dogs that are stressed out, that come in, there's a lot of them, they face each other. And so, there is this major stress the dogs go through, and they're barking all the time, and getting more difficult in their behavior. And that, if the facility was rearranged in such a way that, then the dogs would be calmer, their behavior would change probably better, and they'd be more adoptable, and those kinds of things. So, so, we talked about what the association kind of expects from facilities these days. And so, we're looking at the CIP thing of, for the next two to five years, maybe up to $395,000. Now, can we do that? I don't know. But that's sort of been out there, and probably will have to be done gradually in order to make the changes. They also discussed the need for at least two more, there's vacancies, so they need at least two more field staff, and, and two more shelter staff, because the facility is increasing with animals and stuff. And basically, that was that. So, the other two committees, ORCA met, the Olympic Region Clean Air Agency, met June 13th, yesterday. And we talked about the executive director's contract. Her contract was up this year. And so, the sixth county board upgraded her contract to being 135,000 a year. And this is quite low compared to the other five counties. I mean, the other Washington counties that are regional air quality agencies. She's not at the bottom, but she's, for the amount of area covered and stuff, it's not significant increase. But, and then, that is to go on for the contract for four years. That was the change. We had a presentation of the Ultrafine Study, which is from, was on the cogenerator for Port Angeles. And I realize this doesn't cover Thurston County, but it was a significant issue back when the cogenerator was being put into the Port Angeles. And everybody was sure that they would suffer from ultrafine particles. And so, what ended up coming out of that was doing such monitoring studies in all the six counties to make sure we have our monitors in the right place. But also, the ultrafine monitor covered, you know, what is being picked up of, and whether it increased from the cogenerator. And what turned, it turned out to be, was the typical thing that we have. The particles, particularly during winter, was not from the cogenerator, but it was from wood stoves, because they burn a lot of wood up there. And not only does it cause ultrafine particles, it causes PM point, point two particles. So, if they would change out their wood stove for some other kind of a simpler heating system, they'd probably reduce the particle issue. So, it isn't from the cogeneration. Actually, it, that is taking out a significant amount of, from its previous, like 1950-type of boiler, it's actually reduced the safety issue, issue significantly, because it's improved what it's being removed from the new cogenerator. So, besides that, then, we passed a few, we looked at whether we should refinance or, or pay off our office that we own, or ORCA owns. And after looking at the pros and cons, we, they wouldn't gain anything by it, it would be just minimal. So, we decided to not bother to pay that off, and just keep paying for it, because we can do set-asides of other money that could be used for something else. And then, we passed a resolution for concerning, the Consumer Price Index Adjustment for the ORCA fee. And we passed another resolution for an adjustment for the per capita supplemental in, income analysis. And I, and then, we adopted our 2019 budget. So, with that, so that is the Olympic Region Clean Air Agency. And then, LOT, Clean Water Alliance, actually met the 13th, also in the evening. And for the work session, we covered the information about septic conversions incentive program. And it seems to be working very well. And the board would like to see if we can't make sure we get funds in there to keep doing it, because it helps those particularly with fixed and minimal, and low income to make any conversions when they, when their septic fails. So, it won't pay for the full amount, but it pays for some. We also talked about our strategic plan, again, session three, on, talked more about rates and those kinds of things. And then, also, we talked about what is called occupied space improvements, and looking at the space of how to make, make it more efficient and effective. For the business meeting, we had a, we passed the bio, the contract for biological process improvements designed to parametrics. And this is really a, kind of a nifty project, in my opinion, beside, just, I mean, this is a huge costly project, but it's being broken down into, you know, design, and then construction, and so forth. But it's to save, the energy savings is estimated at 22%. That's huge, when you talk about the cost of this project. It also optimizes space so that, and that's kind of a premium at the Buddy Inlet Treatment Plant, because it's pulling things together and doing things under one space area, so you're not spread out. And the other thing is the program manager, Matt Kinley, worked really hard with the consultants and brought the cost down. I know this sounds crazy, like E, but it, it was at like 3,700 something or other dollars. And he worked with him, and worked with him to bring it down to 3,300,000 or 400,000. So, a significant amount of working with him, how they could make it less costly and more efficient, so.
What's that for?
It's for the biological process improvements. And what this is, is where all your biological components come together, and they process it. I mean, it's a significant component of the plant. It's not the sedimentation basins, but it's the other part that, where all the biologics kind of work. I could explain it more, but I have to walk you through pages.
That's, that's fine. I'll take your word for it.
It, it's actually very interesting, personally. But, but the other thing, again, is optimize the space, and it's energy savings, and that kind of thing.
Quick question for you?
Yeah.
You, you mentioned that there'd be a, they expect a 22% savings on energy use, right? Will that cover the cost of that over some period of time? I mean, what's the ROI on that, the return on investment? Any idea, or no?
I don't actually know. Maybe Scott Edgar could speak to that. He's on the technical committee.
So, I can't speak to the return on investment, but the, the number that the Deputy Mayor is speaking about is the consultant fees. That's not the-
Yes, it's the design.
But they are doing some major-
Oh.
...changes to their, to their process, their flow, to make it more efficient. I've, I've seen the numbers. You'd almost need to have a visual display to show how much change is going to occur in the, you know, in their yard, to make it more efficient in the tight space that they're working in. But it, it's, yeah, it's definitely the right thing to do. Waste water treatment plants are incredibly expensive. And it, it will resolve, result in ultimately, ultimate cost savings and efficiencies in a program, but I don't know what the ROI is right off the top of my head.
Thanks. Did you just say that the 3 million plus was only the design? That wasn't the actual-
Correct.
Yes. This is going to be very expensive, but it's, but our sedimentation plans were 60 million. So, I mean, we're not talking about 10,000 here and 10,000 there, when you talk about a wastewater treatment plant. Your equipment is extremely costly. Ask Scott about that.
Yeah, and our Finance Director, former accountant for City of Spokane Wastewater Management, can vouch for it as well.
Yes, yes. Actually, though, because we're doing it, you know, design, and then a little here, and then construction, and whatever, it breaks it up, so it doesn't seem as much. But we did the same thing with our sedimentation basins, too, which were total up, I think, over 60 million dollars. But we save, remember, why we have that little incremental raise, we save over 50 years. And as we get the amount we need, then we launch it, and then we save and launch the next thing. So, that's why there's this little incremental amount, so that they can do the capital improvements. So, okay, I, that's my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Young.
I have no reports tonight.
Oh, bless you. Councilmember Greenstone.
I have no report either.
Hearn?
I have a really, really, really long report for tonight. I don't. I would like to report on Thurston County Coalition Against Trafficking. Right notes here. It's a building time. After the race, we actually have realized that we've created quite a few programs, and, which is good news, but we need mo people to help manage these now. So, we're looking for people that are convicted and passionate about helping to fight, helping to beat out human trafficking. And there's several committee positions available. We're looking for youth to participate. There are two AmeriCorps positions available. Those are actually kind of paid internships. And then, there's actually an education grant at the end for $5,000. So, if you know a person 18-plus that would like to consider the AmeriCorps through this program, we have two positions available for that. We're also looking for interns, anything we can get. So, but it's a fun and meaningful work. We recognize tonight, unofficially, that tonight the school district has committed to training their entire staff and student body to recognize the signs of human trafficking. So, we commend them, and in fact, we're looking at possible official recognitions for steps of excellence like this, that the tonight's school district has committed to. Big news, national, international news is, since I spoke last about this committee, Backpage.com has come down. A little bit of history on this. So, I don't have the numbers, the, but Backpage was a multi, multi, multi-million dollar business website, that for the large part, was a human trafficking website. And it took the United States Congress to actually shut it down. And that's a big deal. This is America. And, you know, the question that came up early on, on this struggle, is, we're America, we don't shut down websites. It's a big deal. So, a lot of investigation and evidence gathering at the national, international level had to be taken over many, many, many months. And then, finally, Congress had to decide to, to bring it down. And I wanted to recognize and thank Congressman Denny Heck, who voted yes to, to put that site down. You know, that's a political risk when you shutting down a website. And not every delegate from Washington State did vote yes. I'll just let their votes be their votes, but it, likely, it's that they didn't, weren't aware of, you know, what went behind and being defensible to shut a website down. But Congressman Heck's office has always been open to learning, gathering information, hearing, hearing Thurston County Against Trafficking. And so, the congressman was, was prepared to make a decision when that came about. So, and as a result of that, Craigslist pulled down their personals, because they recognized, based upon the reasonings and the rules, and the lawsuits that had been, that had been coming on for these problems, that they didn't want to be involved in that. And so, they made that decision themselves as a result. So, those are some major tools that human traffickers have used, that they're not using now. So, we're really, really glad about that. That, that congressional leadership. Also, locally, want to do a shout-out to Experience Olympia and beyond. They reached out to our group and actually asked for a program to, for hotel training, awareness about human trafficking. And so, that was a, a big move. And at some point, I think I'd like to put together some form of formal recognition for Experience Olympia, and also Congressman Heck's office for these leadership activities that they took. And so, that's the report for Thurston- And so that's the report for Thurston County Coalition Against Human Trafficking.
Thank you much. Appreciate it. It's good to see some progress being made.
Massive progress. Thank you.
And thank you for your work on this.
And thank you for your support.
Yeah. Councilor Stebbin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Lacey South Sound Chamber had its forum on the first Wednesday of the month at 11:30 at St. Martin's. We awarded scholarships to students from North Thurston Public Schools who applied for scholarship and went through the interview process. The great news was we gave away almost nearly $15,000, which was a record for the Chamber in all its years, to eight different students, which one wants to be a rocket scientist. So out of the eight applicants, there were seven female. And then the one gentleman that told you wants to be an aerospace engineer. And those that don't know about the Kid Wiler Foundation, Kid Wiler was one of the founders of Lacey Chamber of Commerce back in the day. Now we're known as Lacey South Sound Chamber. So incorporates DuPont and Yelm and other municipalities in the area that didn't have an avenue to, you know, get the word out about their business. So Kid Wiler, like I said, he founded the Chamber and he was president for a couple of years. And upon his death, his wife, education was very important to him. Upon his death, his wife made the scholarship fund and started it. So it's strong and going strong today, and that's great news. Other than that, that's my report. But I wanted to briefly mention the Lacey South Sound Chamber's barbecue fest that's coming up on July 7th. And this Saturday is the celebrity basketball game at Timberline High School. It's from, I think it's 11 o'clock in the morning till, I don't know the exact date. I think it's, I think it's 11 to four or 11 to five. But CJ Prossis will be there, Jordan Big Plays, Big Play Babs. Funny story about that is when he intercepted Drew Bledsoe's pass in the end zone, we scored like 10 points in 30 seconds when they played the Cowboys way back in the day. Well, anyways, he intercepted the ball, ran it down to the 10 yard line, we kicked the field goal and won the game. We scored, scored all our points in like 30 seconds. But he threw his glove into the stands and I was in the hawk nest and caught it and gave it to my son. And he signed in that glove on Saturday for me for my son. It's pretty awesome.
Yeah.
Good guy. He, he went to the Army's Ball with me the couple of years ago with the general. And he's a great guy. If you haven't been a part of this before and, and you love the Seahawks and celebrities in general, this is a real grassroots thing. I mean, we'll, you'd be, you'll be talking to the players this close. Many instances, kids that go get thrown and thrust in the game and shoot free throws. And it's really family orientated and it's, if you never experienced it, I think everybody enjoyed it. And that is my report.
So it's, it's this Saturday at Timberline, right?
At Timberline High School this Saturday.
At 11:00. Okay. Good deal. So next up is Councilmember Cox.
Hey. Reporting tonight on intercity transit and two other meetings. Intercity Transit Authority met this past week on the 6th and approved a number of things, including the 2019-22 Transportation Improvement Program for projects that we anticipate federal funding for. I think this report dovetails a little bit with what the mayor was talking about earlier. We received an update on proposed tweaks to the service changes that we're talking about implementing in September that would include service up into northeast, part of Northeast Lacey. Northeast Lacey won't change, but I think they're looking at a couple of small other changes in that. And this is largely based on the feedback that the staff is getting now that the proposal is out there. And the authority will be voting on this in July with the implementation for the route changes starting in September. They're also looking toward future. The intercity senior staff is meeting with jurisdictions throughout the area to talk about the possibility of a, going out for a small tax increase. I think it would be four tenths of a cent in order to help fund more improvements in the service and to get intercity transit on firmer financial footing. According to financial projections, right now, we're looking at going into the red by 2022 if all things stay as, as they are right now. And that would mean cutting back from existing service in order to live within the means. And, you know, the reality for intercity transit is that federal dollars are shrinking. 80% of the intercity transit's budget comes from sales tax, and that's a very volatile source. So it makes it hard to do predictable budgets. So a lot to think about on that, but they will be coming to us as well, looking for a meeting on that. And as the mayor mentioned as well, they're working with the State Department of Transportation regarding what's called shoulder running. And this is an opportunity, if they'll allow us to do that, to run buses on the shoulders of the freeway and to help get around some of the really, you know, jammed up areas around Fort Lewis to get the buses that are going to Tacoma and then on to Seattle, try to help them maintain an on-time schedule. So more to come on that. And then the Regional Planning Council met on the first. Excuse me, just get there. And we received briefings on the 2020, 2022 Surface Transportation Program, Transportation Alternatives Program, and Congestion Mitigation and Air Quality, which the mayor was reporting on earlier, program. Total amount of proposals amounted to something a little over $8.6 million, which is more than we can fund. But we'll look forward to receiving the recommendations from the Transportation Policy Board at the council's full meeting in July and we'll see what moves forward there. We also received a report on I-5 near-term actions. And this is proposed from the DOT to address I-5 congestion in northern Thurston County. And those actions could include ramp meters at several of the on-ramps, again, running buses on the shoulders, marketing to increase use of van pools to try to take more single passenger vehicles off the road and reduce congestion that way. Increasing telework and other flexible schedule options on the Capitol campus and implementing what we call transit signal priority. It wouldn't, that doesn't give buses quite the same priority as like an emergency vehicle would, but it, when it's implemented, it does help the buses get through a little faster than they might. That's been the number one complaint that they're trying to deal with is congestion is really strangling the, the intercity transit buses. And so they're having a really difficult time staying on time because it just takes longer to get from point A to point B when they have to share the road with way more vehicles. And those numbers just keep increasing. So looking, looking to do more with that. And then finally, we heard a report on a related topic of commute trip reduction and transportation demand management activities. And these include encouraging people to use transit, to use active transportation options like walking and bicycling and, or avoiding the commute altogether by working from home. So we're looking at how effective each of these is in making a dent into the problems we all share with trying to move around. And then just earlier this evening, the Urban Cities Ad hoc Committee on Housing and Homelessness, on which Councilmember Young and I sat, had a meeting earlier this evening, and we received a briefing from our city manager on a proposal that Thurston County has made for changing the city's role in deciding how federal and state dollars for homelessness and housing are spent. The city mayor and city manager, along with their counterparts from Olympia and Tomwater and Commissioner Blake and the county manager, I believe, met in late May to talk about their proposal, which we heard more fully tonight. And the committee felt like the cities needed a little bit more say in how these dollars are spent, or at least how the recommendations get to the county commission. So we're proposing another model to them and inviting them to come and negotiate a path forward so that, that we can all agree on. Because, I mean, what's really at stake here is trying to get the most good done that we can to help keep people safe and housed with the few dollars that we have to do it. So we want to make sure they're spent well and that we're making meaningful contributions to the community. And that's my report.
Thank you very much. And we've reached the end of our agenda. And so it's actually going to be a while for me to be back at a city council meeting. Next week, we have a work session. The week after that, I don't think we have enough agenda items, so that, that meeting, I'm not sure, when are we, are we going to discuss that next Thursday? If we're going to have a council meeting?
So far, there's no agenda items.
So far, there's no agenda items for the last meeting. And then we have another work session in early July. And by the end of the month, I will be going to Poland to our sister city, again, Minsk Mazewski, for a festival that they're putting on, a big music festival they're putting on. And I am bringing a musician with us, thanks to Councilmember Stebbin. You wanted to talk about that?
Well, I don't know what, really what to say. And I know Ethan Tucker was looking to go and be a part of the music festival that they're having there, Poland at their sister city. And he, you know, it's, it's very expensive and he was looking for sponsors and I couldn't, I was happy to, to help him get over there because, I mean, the experience that we had when we went over was, it was great. And I wouldn't, I didn't want him to miss it on the, in regards to financing or funds.
So I just, I really want to thank you, Councilmember Stebbin, for helping get Ethan Tucker over there. It's going to be a great time. They've, of course, this council's met a lot of them when they were here for the mayor's gala this last, this last year. So I'm really looking forward to continuing that strong relationship. There's a lot of really great things happening with our sister city organization. And so really looking forward to going back there. So it's going to be a little bit while, while before, I guess, the next council meeting's going to be July the 12th, something like that.
July 5th.
July 5th, actual council meeting though.
Right.
But back on the 12th, so. So hopefully, when everyone has a, a safe 4th of July. And I guess you want, we, this is the last time we have a chance to invite people out for the 3rd of July fireworks. You want?
Yeah, I think everyone knows the new location for the 3rd of July, 4th of, well, we celebrate 4th of July on the 3rd of July as a tradition, and that's at Rayner Vista Community Park. It's been a great venue. You can show up early, hang out with your family and friends, and then we'll have a 15 to 20 minute fireworks show. There'll be bands, there'll be food, there'll be additional restroom opportunities. We've learned over the, the few years, Parks has taken over that event, but we are excited about it. It's been a long tradition. We think that we're smarter in Lacey because we get to stay up all night on the 3rd of July to celebrate our nation's independence and then get to sleeping on the 4th.
I would agree. So we've reached the end of our agenda, so without objection, I'll call us meeting adjourned. And as always, you keep it classy, Lacey.